Want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for Murfreesboro District 186. And Mrs. Hines, do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Dorr?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Here.
Mr. Rundy?
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Grody, are there any additions, changes?
There are two changes. New business, C2, the West Bus Bid. We were hopeful that we would get them by Friday and be able to send them out to the Board, but we did not. It looks like we will get those next month. If we don't get the bids by next month, we'll probably have an item on there that's a permission to bid, so...
So we're going to table that?
We're going to table that. And then the other one, C4, the SRO Officer, is listed as an action item. It is an informational item this month. We're going to take action on that next month.
Okay, that's it?
Yes, sir.
And I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated 1/21/2020. It was amended on February the 17th to show that Mr. Green and myself attended via phone conference. And the baccalaureate and graduation times were reversed, so they were changed. And the Tri-County Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated 1/8/2020. Tri-County Bills for February 2020, applications and reports. And I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is the approval of District 186 Bills for February 2020. Are there any questions from the Board?
I have one question on the... I think it ends up being in the big packet. It's like Page 2, whatever.
Actually, they're in alphabetical order now, right?
The...
This is a nice, nice format, so...
Southwestern Illinois Bus Company. Was there a deposit to offset some of that? Because I thought there was some fundraising.
There was. Seventeen hundred and fifty dollars was deposited from the wrestling activity account at the middle school before they actually even left to go.
Okay.
We had the check before they left.
Oh, yeah.
Anyone else? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the district bills as presented. In a second? Second. Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes. Motion carries. Item seven, Communications. Do we have any?
We have eight.
Oh.
To Mr. Chris Grody and the Murfreesboro Board of Education, this letter shall serve as my notification that I am retiring from my position as teacher in the Murfreesboro Unit 186 School District at the conclusion of 2022-2023 school year. At that time, I will have thirty-four-plus years of service and additional unused sick days to meet the guidelines for retirement. I have enjoyed my years of service to Murfreesboro. I appreciate the support of the Board and the administration, as well as the support from colleagues, parents, students, and community. I cannot imagine any other situation that would have been more satisfying than my time as an educator in this district. Thanks to all who have been part of my years in Murfreesboro. Sincerely, Ken Stroud.
And the recommendation is to approve Mr. Stroud's retirement.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We wish him well.
To Mr. Chris Grody and the Murfreesboro Board of Education, this letter shall serve as my notification that I am retiring from my position as teacher in the Murfreesboro School District at the conclusion of 2223 school year. I have enjoyed my years of service to Murfreesboro. I appreciate the support of the Board and the administration, as well as the support from my colleagues, parents, students, and community. I cannot imagine another situation that would have been more satisfying than my time as an educator in this district. Thanks to all who have been a part of my years in Murfreesboro. Kelly Stroud.
And we can't have Ken sitting home alone without her, so the recommendation is to approve. Mrs. Stroud's.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We wish both of them well.
To Mr. Grody and the Murfreesboro Board of Education, I would like to take this time to notify you and the Board of Education that I plan on retiring at the end of the 2223 school year. Thank you. Kelly Mahoney.
And the recommendation is to approve that as well.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We wish her well.
This is from Rachel Bachi. I think it might be Bachi or Chamnis Jim. I wanted to request my days off from my maternity leave. As of now, I will be induced March 10th. That will be my last day. I would come back approximately May 21st to finish up the last few days of school and final exams. This could change depending on days donated. Thank you. If there's any information you need, please let me know.
Recommendation to approve for maternity leave.
And I'll entertain a motion for that. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Mr. Grody and members of Unit 186, I am submitting my resignation from District 186. I would like to thank you for the nine years I have spent working at various schools. My last day of work will be February the 12th, 2020. I have enjoyed working, especially at the middle school. I will certainly miss my work family. Sincerely, Stephen Porter.
The recommendation is to approve his resignation.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Grody and Board of Education, this is my notice that I do not plan on coaching next year. I will help out when I can, but last year was it for me. I can write you a formal letter through email or type you up one when I get back home on February the 28th from Mexico. Going through a divorce and having a ten-year-old who's getting more involved in sports is the reason why. I'm going to invest in myself and him. Thank you for the opportunity, though, and you have always been the best. April Gordon.
And the recommendation is to approve her resignation.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Mr. Grody, I am officially sending in my letter of resignation effective at the end of this 2019-20 school year. It has been my pleasure and joy to be able to work in the Murfreesboro School District for the past fifteen years. I have rekindled many old relationships and made many new ones that I will cherish. I love to work and I love the kids, but I think it's time to go. Thanks for many good years. Sincerely, Brenda McDaniel.
And we recommend her resignation slash retirement.
And I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To whom it may concern, regretfully, I would like to put in my resignation as the head cross-country coach. After much consideration and several discussions with my family, we have decided that it would be best for me to step down as the head coach. I have enjoyed my time coaching cross-country and getting to know my athletes. I wish them the best and look forward to their success in the future. Sincerely, Shay Baker.
And we recommend his resignation approval.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's it?
That's it.
Next item is fishbowl, and I think we had some.
Here is a copy of our program from the Elementary All-State Concert, which was February 1st. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to send our students to this event. Our eight students represented the school district and community well, and they made me very proud music teacher, Stephanie Hanson. She's got attachments.
Anyone else?
Dear Murfreesboro School Board, I am pleased to announce that four teachers from Carruthers Elementary School has received grants from the Mickey Jackson Memorial Teacher Grant Fund to purchase educational materials for Carruthers School. Sherry Schimp wrote a grant to purchase age-appropriate classbook sets to supplement a Holocaust unit for the fourth grade. Lisa Shields' grant allowed her to purchase five more Ozbot EVOs robots, a small coding robot, to complete a class set of Ozbots. These robots will be available for all classes at Carruthers School to check out and use. April Bartnik and Jessica Coleman's grant was used to supplement the school library with social, emotional learning books for grades three through five. Thank you, Sherry Schimp.
The MHS Auditorium was selected for the Harry H. Edwards Industry Advancement Award. It was given by the Precast and Pre-stressed Concrete Institute. There will be a plaque to hang in the high school. Congrats to those involved with this project.
They like the trees.
They like... There's been a lot of positive comments about the trees.
When do we get our plaque?
You didn't like the trees.
You can't hope. Should be in the next week or so I get a plaque.
That's pretty cool. I'm sorry, who's next?
I wanted to let you know that a new quilt is being unveiled this week for the Million Words Club. The quilt depicts the names of those students who have read at least one million words for the year 2018 through 2019. There are many that read more than that. The making of this quilt was something special that I wanted to do for this club as a fun way to remember their achievement. It will be displayed one day this week in the cafeteria at the middle school so all students can see it, and a treat given to those with their name on the quilt. It will then be moved to the front office so it can be viewed by all who enter. The quilt from eighteen... 2018 to 2019 will be moved to... Or must be 2017 to 2018, will be moved from its permanent home in the library. Designing and making this quilt has brought pleasure to myself and my fellow sewing partner, Monica May.
Is that it? Mrs. Evaldi, you don't have one?
Nope.
Okay. Next item is Freedom of Information Act request. And, all right, next is Item 10, Recognition of Audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Are there any employee concerns?
Really? High schoolers with no concerns?
You'd bonus points if you stand up and say so.
No, you don't.
I'll put plus five.
All right. Moving to Old Business, the first item under Old Business is the District Financial Update. This is informational.
There's been nothing new regarding the state finances. We're getting our checks. We're getting our payments. Currently, I'm waiting to see if that Healthy Communities Grant will open sometime soon. That's probably the next thing on our docket. That's the one that does our summer school program and allows us to do the library integration, so just waiting for that one to open.
We did get our million-dollar loan from Egyptian Lectures from the Royal Co-op, and we've already made our first payment back, so...
Yeah, good. Okay, that's it? Thank you. Item number two is the approval of the Murfreesboro Middle School HBAC Project Phase 2 Bid, which is enclosure number one in your packet.
We opened the bids on February 14th. We got them from Hartley Mechanical, A&amp;W Plumbing and Heating, and Southern Illinois Piping. Architects have reviewed the bids, and they are recommending that we go with the low bid, which is A&amp;W Plumbing and Heating. Mr. Seifert's here for any questions that you may have.
Questions from the Board?
It was considerably lower.
I'm sorry?
It was considerably lower, but Mr. Seifert has talked with them, and they feel strongly that they've left nothing out, so...
Any questions? All right, hearing none, then I will entertain a...
With the... It says eleven percent from the average of the top two, top of the highest bidders, the bid we're accepting are going to propose to accept eleven percent less. Was there anything that was out of line in any particular section or across the board? Was there a percentage down on the sections of the bid?
Well, considering it's only... We only see one item that they bid. It's a lump sum, so we can't... We don't know if there was a...
Breakdown?
We don't have breakdown.
Okay.
So I can't answer that question.
Was there any more clarification from any one bidder more than any of the other ones?
We had questions for... But everybody that asked a question got put on an addendum, so everybody saw the question and the answer. Let's see, the last addendum went out on the... What would have been the 12th, so they had the two days to produce a bid.
So all that would be documented, so work orders in the future will all be void because of that? Fair enough.
Right.
Other questions?
So if work orders are not all void in the future, then the... Basically, A&amp;W Plumbing's going to be responsible for any cost?
There could be, and I'm not going to kid anybody. We are working with a hundred-year-old building. There could be things come up. Unforeseen conditions.
I would be shocked if there weren't. We've had very few.
But as far as off-the-drawing, miscalculations based off the drawing stuff?
If they missed something, if it was on the drawings or in the specifications, in the addendum, that's on there, not on you guys.
Okay.
Anyone else? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation for the Phase 2 bid at the middle school. So moved. In a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
No.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number three is the approval of the Student Parent Handbook for 2020 to 2021.
And we've had some comments from Board members over the weekend. And so what I did was I put together a document. It's Handbook Management Plan Updates. This is for the Student Parent Handbook, so if you just look at the district handbook, we've replaced Park with IAR. We've taken out the handbook's mention of the à la carte because we don't do that anymore. We've added the phone numbers to places. The parking's going to be updated to reflect more of the high school. You can go through and read those sections. But the recommendation is to approve the handbook with those modifications as presented.
I don't know that we got answers, though, on all of the questions, though. Like, what... Like, define what is age-appropriate in the dress code.
That's the building management plans, so we're not at that one yet.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Other questions? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the Student Parent Handbooks.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is the approval of the Building Management Plans for 2020...
And you'll see documents in there regarding the changes there. Dress code's one of those things that you want to keep. You can't necessarily have a black-and-white rule that is easily followed because what's appropriate for one is not appropriate for another based on their maturities and whatnot, just how they wear it, sizes and whatnot, and things of that nature. So really, age-appropriate's the discretion of the administrator.
But this is for K through 2, so I guess my question is, what are we saying is not age-appropriate?
Mrs. Pinky, that would be ball in your court. Would you like to say what's...
I responded to Mr. Grody earlier today. I feel like we can kind of do three things. One is keep the language we have, which is the same language they've had for several years. That's why it's there. The other is to expand on it, which I looked at Carterville and Carbondale Elementary, and they have this whole page of thou shalt not wear, you know, alcohol, profanity, nudity, on and on and on, kind of graphic things. Or we can just take it out altogether. I don't know what the best route is. Just, to me, obviously, dress should be appropriate for school, but it's not something to live or die over where they're for kids' education.
You call the parents and you say there's issues with the... There's issues with the clothing or whatnot, I mean?
This was shortened, though, from last year because last year it was pretty much the same as Carruthers. I don't think Carruthers changed. The Generals was like that, so some things were taken out that were in there last year. If I remember correctly, they were pretty much the same.
The General was... Last year was just one sentence. It was age-appropriate.
I thought it was pretty much... Oh, okay.
No, they left it very, very bland last...
It was weather-appropriate. Weather-appropriate.
Weather's still in there, too, I think. And I mean, I understand weather-appropriate, and I understand appropriate shoes for K.E. Beyond that, I don't know how detailed you really want to get with a K.E.'s building's dress code.
I agree. That's why I was curi... I mean, I guess, I think the least restrictive dress code should be in place.
You've got to have the administrators.
And especially because it's usually female students that are given dress code violations, and it isn't usually, in my opinion, fair.
I would need to talk to the administrators, but I don't... I mean, how often do you give... How many... How often do students have consequences for their dress code?
Towards the beginning of the year, we don't... We have very few. As we... What happens when we get closer to spring and students have grown and they get out, last year's wore drove, and things are malfitting? And that's when we typically have...
But I mean, are we really going to tell a third grader that their clothes are malfitting? I don't think that's appropriate.
We're reaching positive, getting something better.
Yeah, I would never approach that situation like that and say, honey, your attire is not fitting.
They're not getting consequences for that. They're not getting consequences for that, I mean...
And they're not getting pulled out of school or embarrassed or...
If we have... We discreetly bring them to the office, and we have other clothes that we have that we will sometimes replace them with if appropriate. If we have the appropriate sizes, we'll call parents and say, hey, well, we've noticed thus and such that, you know, students have grown. If you need assistance, would you like to help you with that? Sometimes it's just an issue with funds that the families have, so...
And is there a dress code for teachers or staff?
No.
No, right? Just want to make it understood that we don't have a dress code for our faculty or staff, but we do impose one on our students.
We don't have a written dress code, however. I have addressed faculty members before about clothing, and... So...
I'm not saying there should necessarily be a dress code for teaching...
Yeah, and I'm just saying there's nothing written down, but I have addressed...
I'm pointing out the double standard.
That would probably need to be contractual, too, with teachers.
Contractual, man.
I'm just pointing out the... I just ask about the age-appropriate because how are you going to defend that to a parent if their child were to get disciplined for age-appropriate dress? I mean, it's something to think about. I think my vote is we take it out, but...
What we do is... They're not getting detention. They're not... You know, they're having to change their clothes or they get contacted home, and we work it out. The not having anything in there doesn't allow us to have any, then, standard to say, well, that's just not what you're allowed to wear. We do need to have the administrators, and I don't think that...
I thought it's addressed in the district's code. But are they going to read... They're going to read them?
I mean, are we having a lot of parents calling upset about their kids and they're being reprimanded for dress codes, or...
I mean, I have parents say things all the time.
What's that?
I haven't heard any. I haven't had anybody complain to me this year. I haven't had any.
I've had parents say things. About how their children can't wear a tank top, but teachers can, or...
They need to be enforced to formally stop to have a standard. They just can't let everybody wear whatever they want in school.
Yeah, but we moved to the building management plans basically because of the dress code. And back then, it was Mr. Turner and Mrs. Bunselmeier arguing over... You know, because at the primary buildings, a tank top's not an issue. It can become an issue at the high school level, and so trying to...
How?
Sorry?
How?
I guess it's not the tank top, per se, but there's other aspects of the shirt that then cause issues.
But I think the policy says, like, undergarments can't show, or... I think one of them says, you know, nipples can't show, and so I guess, how has been... If those things aren't being violated, how is a tank top bad?
And they can wear, I mean...
Some school... I think the high school, they can wear them, right? Yeah. And I assume K through 5 can wear tank tops? Is it... Can fifth graders wear a tank top? No. A fifth grader cannot wear a tank top?
They're required to have sleeves on it.
Carruthers and the middle school. A ten-year-old cannot wear a tank top to school. And that's a distraction? How?
It's part of our policy that we've always had, and we've always adhered to. So, I mean, where do you draw the line?
Do teachers wear tank tops? Because I'm sure that I've seen teachers wear tank tops.
We can either approve the building management plans, or we can table it till next month, and we can talk more about the dress code and have a...
Well, to me, to me, we're getting into kind of managing a building rather than the oversight of it. It's... We've got people in the buildings that make those decisions, so... Is your recommendation to approve it?
I guess, like Mrs. Pinky said, Mrs. Pinky said that if it's up to the discretion of the administrator, and we have it as a age-appropriate, are we okay with age-appropriate, and the administrator is the one that determines that, or are we not okay with that? Because it could be a blanket for every school, then that it's age-appropriate, weather-appropriate, administrator is the one who draws the law.
Well, the administrator's the one that's going to have to defend it when a parent comes in and is upset. So if the administrators are okay with that, then yes, but, you know, like...
Well, and it sounds like we're sending the message here that this should not be a sexist issue, that it should be enforced equally across all genders, and that it's... I mean, I don't think that...
Seems like it should be more uniform, though.
Policy needs to be made.
Why can we have... Why do we have to have sleeves some places and not others?
I personally like it be age-appropriate, weather-appropriate, and the administrator is the one who can...
You have to trust us not to be crazy. You know what I mean?
Having one dress code that you try to apply to A12 ends up being where you just... You can't have a dress code. You just have to say whatever, whatever that you want to do, go ahead.
I mean, there's some... I can see that some differences, like the straps on the shoes going up and down the stairs at the middle school would be different than if you're on one floor at the other buildings.
Cody, how do you feel, obviously, once you get to the high school, things are completely different? How do you feel having it to where it's open, age-appropriate, you are the one that draws the final word versus having... I would much rather have a policy in place for that handbook that is in place and be able to follow that policy, instead of being the end-all that gets to determine what's age-appropriate and what's not. I... I've pretty much explicitly said what needs to be covered, what cannot.
Well, I find it interesting that it's age-appropriate to wear a tank top until third grade, and then it becomes age-appropriate again to wear a tank top. Can you wear a tank top in sixth grade? So at ninth grade, it's age-appropriate again. So from birth to about seven or eight years old, it's age-appropriate. And then it's age-appropriate again from fourteen until, you know...
When in the handbook, it just says a shirt with fabric in the front, back, and on the sides and under the arms.
Is that the high school?
No, it's the handbook.
Oh, the district handbook.
The district handbook. To the four administrators, are we having an issue with this?
No, we're not. I don't know if there's been a consequence issue to school or high school.
I don't know if there has. We've talked to a kid or two at times.
There's maybe been a few that maybe had to go put a shirt on that had something inappropriate on their shirt, or... I mean, I know, you know, five-plus years ago, there was a lot of talk about leggings and yoga pants and those types of things, and...
Yeah, and that's still in.
And it is still there. They're allowed at the high school, and I mean, quite honestly, they're one of the cheapest pairs of pants that children can buy. And so they're easier to get a hold of, and for students to have multiple pairs, and so we allow them.
Okay, so you're making a recommendation to accept the building management plans?
Yes, sir.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that. In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the school wellness plans. Item number five is the approval of the School Wellness Plans.
And these have been on review. I got no changes on these, and so the recommendation's to approve them as presented.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
I have a question too. So if the, the coffee shop, that's before school, so the wellness plans will not impact that, right? Because that's.
Right.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the wellness plans.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. New business, first item is the approval of the Social Studies Textbook Adoption, which is enclosure number two in your packet.
And this is the entire list now? The recommendation is to approve it as presented. What was the total cost on that, Jan?
I don't have a full, it just aren't.
Fifty-seven thousand for the middle school.
But the, but the high school, that, the seventy-seven, four seventy-four is already done, right?
Yeah, we already, we're at that, we're at that December, I think. It's like a hundred and seventy.
There were some additional high school pieces.
Do you need to get the Illinois pieces?
AP.
AP, and then supplemental model.
Yeah, there's like twenty-five thousand left.
And the General is buying leveled readers to go with there. In fact, the, the purchase of the General Johnny Logan books were about as much as what Mr. White got discounted from the middle school when he bargained with the sales rep, so.
So, the totals come around two-hundred forty-eight thousand, you said, how much was already purchased?
Seventy-seven, four seventy-four.
Okay, so two-hundred forty thousand's roughly what we're.
No, we already approved seventy-seven thousand.
Seventy-seven, I didn't say seventy-nine.
So it's like a hundred and seventy left.
Hundred and seventy thousand.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the Social Studies Textbooks. Second?
Second.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Yvaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. The next item will be the approval to bid painting.
Yeah, and this is one of those things where we ask every year to go out to bid for painting throughout the district, which will occur over the summer. Last summer, a lot of painting was done at the General in the hallways and classrooms. This would include hallways in the buildings, high school, weight room, middle school, small gym, exterior at the middle school, and then some other classrooms that have been, that will be pointed out, pointed out later. We are asking for permission to go out to bid, and then we would bring it back next month for your approval.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve going out for bids for painting. Second?
Second.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Yvaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. The next item is the School Resources Officer, this is now informational.
Yeah, and Chief Ellemeyer brought this to me on Friday, and we sent it off to the Board for your review. It looks to me like what they did was they took the Carbondale contract and sent it off. Exhibit A, which is the salaries, is coming.
The high school, right?
Yeah. Right, at the high school. The key thing there is, talking to Mr. Ellemeyer, Chief, seventy-five percent is what we would cover, not a hundred percent as it reads in the article, and it's also pending our legal counsel review. So Exhibit A should be coming soon. Exhibit A will be the salaries that they make and whatnot. There were some questions, like if a SRO officer chooses to attend an event or is there in lieu of auxiliary. I don't think that the School Resource Officer would replace the auxiliary that goes there. If a School Resource Officer comes to an event, I don't expect them to be getting paid for that unless they were asked to by administration because of the game or because of the nature of the whatever, and that would be then approved through the.
So it'd be up to them if they're gonna come in uniform or not?
What's that?
It'd be up to them if they wanna come in uniform.
Right, and so what I'm saying is if you see the SRO officer in uniform at a football game, he might not be getting paid for it, he might just be there in his uniform, because that's.
They might let him do it for comp time or something, so I can, you know.
Right, I mean. But anyway, that's the.
But should we assume though, though, I would think if he's there in uniform, that he is, I mean, otherwise, the assumption would be that he was on duty.
They'll work something out with the union, they can do comp time, you know.
Yeah, I would think if you don't want to be on duty.
Then you need to be in uniform, right.
He'll be, it's in their contract, they turn down all the time.
And so those are just some of the details that are gonna need to be worked out. As far as the office space in each building, some buildings have more office space than others. They would have access to computers, but that'd be the main thing, a desk and a computer so that they could log in and do some work. Private areas, it might change on different days.
And I don't know what they'll do, where are they gonna get, have access to our stuff? Because they all have laptops they can get into.
Right, and they just go through our network servers and things of that nature. But anyway, this will be coming to you next month, so any questions, concerns, comments that you have on it, as soon as I get Exhibit A, which is the salary structure, I will send it off to you.
Next item is the linkage agreement with Centerstone, which is enclosure number three.
This is one of those yearly things. We've talked to the social workers. Administration recommends renewing the linkage agreement with Centerstone as presented.
How long have we had this agreement with them? Do you know?
At least thirteen years.
How often do they see our students, do you know that?
At the high school, the Centerstone individual, Rain?
Robert.
Robert, almost lives there. He's there, he's there quite a bit. Is it Robert?
He's, he's there somewhere.
He must just be assigned to our district though, because I see him all the time.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for the agreement with Centerstone.
So moved.
And a second?
Whichever one you wanna put in, first, second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a need to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section Two of Open Meetings Act Five, on Light and Vow statutes one-twenty slash two, mandatory review, discussion of minutes lawfully closed, the appointment, appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity, the place, replacement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students.
And a second? Mrs. Heinz?
Mr. Beavers? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Yvaldi?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries.